So are we still waiting for the green light? We're good? All right, great, thank you. So, welcome to the April 24th Planning Commission meeting. Want to do the roll call?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
President.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Berube. Chair Olson.
Here. Thank you. And next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any edits, changes?
I move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from April 10th. Were there any edits or changes to those? Go ahead.
Again, I want to say stellar note-taking, so thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify on page five. It was that bylaws thing about the annual annual. So, I had to re-watch it to get the language. So, on the bottom of that page, Commissioner Berube moved approval of the bylaws with the amendment to now read E-10, "Provide annual educational opportunities for all members, including," and right there, instead of, let's insert, "an annual training session" before the words, "the role of a planning commissioner." Everything else is the same.
I'll move approval.
Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Yeah, two annuals.
Two annuals. I'll move approval of the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is community comment. If anyone from the community had an opportunity to speak.
It has to be something that's not currently on the agenda tonight, but all are welcome. If anyone has anything they want to bring up, separate from what's on the agenda tonight, you're welcome to come up. So, seeing none?
I move to close public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, now we go on to the public hearings. We had two site, or we had a site plan and a variance request that have been continued. Are they both continued to May 8th, Carrie, or are they?
So, the first item, we don't have a specific date, but we do have a specific date for the Indian Hills.
Okay.
For May 8th.
Okay. So, there was a site plan with variance at 6304 York Avenue. That's been continued, and we don't know the date. Then, a variance request at 6509 Indian Hills has been continued to May 8th. So, if anyone's here for those, those won't be considered tonight.
I'd like to make a motion. I move continuation of the site plan with variance for 6304 York Avenue to an indefinite date, and continuation of the variance request B-19-5 to May 8th.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, the next on the agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing.
I just have a question regarding, A, my name is Lish Schutz. I live on 483 Berry Road in the townhouses back there. Will we be sent out information of when the next meeting will be then regarding that variance?
Yes.
Yes, we will have to, because we don't, we don't, the plan may or may not come back. There's several issues that need to be worked out, so we'll have to re-notice that one.
Okay, because the only reason I was really interested is because with this picture that we got, it's hard to tell what exactly they're even doing.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of...
You don't have to whole-pack it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Okay, so, next on the agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing, and Todd and I are going to present, and then we're going to come back up as the Planning Commission, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing comments. So, here we go.
So, we were discussing, so I'm joining Olson, the Chair of the Planning Commission.
And I'm Todd Thorson, a member of the Planning Commission.
So, this, the comp plan was part of, everyone who's sitting up there is the comprehensive plan task force, and so, we're just two of the representatives from that, and so, I'm thinking, we might just kind of address you, because you all know what we're talking about.
Hopefully, they do.
Hopefully, they do. So, we're going to go through, you know, a fairly quick PowerPoint presentation, and then we're going to open it up for public comments. And, with that, so, just a quick overview of what we're going to be talking about tonight. We're going to be reviewing the Met Council, regional planning, kind of the big picture. Then, we're going to be walking through the Edina comprehensive plan update process, which will include the Big Ideas Workshop, the Small Area Plans, and then also the full big update of the comprehensive plan. We're also going to be getting into some of the details on the population forecast, the land use guide changes, and then discuss what we've been doing for the public meetings and the public input with the better together. We'll also review the comment report that we've produced, and then review the comprehensive plan schedule. And again, questions, we'll just wait until we're done with this presentation, then we'll go back up there and we'll take the public comment. So, just to kind of quickly go through the comprehensive plan update process, this all began with the Vision Edina in 2015, which moved into the Big Ideas Workshop, which was held on 27, in 2017. And then, we also moved into the Small Area and District Planning, and then that's led into the full comprehensive plan update. And I think I might have skipped a slide. No? Okay. As part of this, we've had public meetings throughout this whole process, so this has been a two-year process, and we've had 177 public meetings, and that includes just everything that's been listed up there, so from workshops to work sessions to actual public hearings, and through all the small area plans and such, we've had multiple public meetings. So, what is the Edina comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan is designed for, as a framework, and it's for guiding the future development. It's not directly saying, "This has to happen here." It's just giving the guidance that we need as things are proposed to us. It's for the future development, redevelopment, and also the community enhancement. We will be using it to shape Edina's future growth. We will be using it to protect what Edina values, and then also to create a more attractive and sustainable Edina. Again, one of the first steps we took was the Big Ideas Workshop that was held over two days in April of 2017. That was just to kind of take that step back and say, "Okay, what have we done with the Vision Edina, and then what do we, how do we want to transfer that and continue that into the comprehensive plan?" So, we reviewed all of that, we discussed the current relevance, and then discovered new ideas that we wanted to make sure were considered as part of the comprehensive plan. The other big part of this has been the Small Area Plans. So, that included the Greater Southdale area, 50th and France, 44th and France, Wooddale and Valley View, 70th and Cahill. Did I miss one?
Got them.
Got them all. There were five of them. That was an intensive process, and those are all areas that had been identified as part of the 2008 comprehensive plan for study. Those are the areas that were being seen as, that was, you know, had change was going to be occurring there, and we wanted to know how to address that, how to accommodate that. So, the big piece of this comprehensive plan was the focus on those small area plans. Let's see, what are we saying on there? So, we had multiple working groups that worked on the small area plans, and there were representatives from the Planning Commission on each of those, and then also from Edina residents and business owners, and it was a good mix of everyone, so we got, they were really very successful. So, those looked at the community livability, connectivity, walkability. We looked at density of development, we looked at traffic, height, respecting adjacent neighborhoods, the transit use, bicycle use, and linkages and connections. All of the small area plans have been approved by the city council, and they are all included in the comprehensive plan. So, again, whenever we talk about anything that's really changing as far as density and such, those are all within the small area plans. Those have all been reviewed, approved already. Then, the last, the step three is the full update of the comprehensive plan. So, the Met Council requires, you know, all cities to have a comprehensive plan. Every 10 years, we have to have to go through this process. They require chapters on land use, housing, water resources, transportation, parks and trails, implementation, economic competitiveness, and resilience. Those last two are the new ones. In addition, Met Council also require, in addition, in addition to the Met Council requirements, Edina has identified six additional priorities. So, we have chapters on arts and culture, heritage preservation, energy and environment, health, human rights, community services, and facilities. And as part of those chapters, we had representatives from all of the other commissions too, so they all were actively involved in writing all those chapters. So, again, the commissions and the city departments reviewed and updated all the chapters of the comp plan. We've also held a 30-day comment period. That has ended, and now, we're in the process where the Planning Commission is holding the public hearing, and then we will be making recommendations to the city council. So, again, this is kind of the, a piece of a big picture for the whole Metropolitan Council, for the metropolitan area, and it's, again, it's a regional 10-year planning cycle. So, it just goes through this whole process, and you can see, I don't know if I can, I'll do the mouse, but it's, is that going to show up here? Rock star. So, this is where we are getting to. We're getting to that December 31st, should be 2019, the end of the comp plan, but it's been this whole cycle. There's all this input that we had, data forecasts that we've received from the Met Council that we've had to also include in our comprehensive plan update. And Todd is going to go into some of those details with the population forecast and such.
Okay, give me a minute, I'm going to screw something up here, so. All right. So, those of you who are not familiar with the Metropolitan Council, they are the regional planning body for the seven-county metro area. They are empowered by the state legislature for many things, most notably, the transit system, sewer, water, and overall regional development, and parks for this area. So, they coordinate this, this process across every area you see in that map, and we like to think Edina is the center of everything, and we kind of are in the center, but from the Met Council's perspective, it's not just about us. It's about everything that's going on across the whole seven-county metro area, and in particular, they look at, how does what we're planning on doing in Edina affect everyone, especially the cities immediately adjacent to us? That's, that's actually the next step we're in. We have a six-month period where the neighboring communities can comment on our comprehensive plan to make sure that we're aligned as a region and as neighbors to each other, so. All right. So, at the end of the day, the comprehensive plan is about land use, and what, and what does that mean? It's how we are going to use the land we have available in Edina. And after all these studies, small area plans, 170 meetings, this is what we, what it looks like in the comprehensive plan amendment. As Joan mentioned, all the changes to density have already been approved as a part of the small area plan process by the city council. As a result, 7% of Edina's land has been guided for increased density, and those are really within the Greater Southdale area. That means 93% of Edina is going to see no change in density in this comprehensive plan. And as you look at this chart, and there's a lot of numbers, this will be, it's available online, these are the ranges in the units per acre. They're ranges, they're not mandatory, it's just guidance, and it doesn't mean that every, every piece of those areas has to have that sort of density. And as always, the number of units allowed on sites is governed by our zoning and subject to the permission of the city council. So, what drives this whole process behind the scenes is this population forecast, and we are provided these by the Met Council on a 10-year basis. The Met Council has a very comprehensive process by which they generate these, and if you want to fall asleep at night, you can go to their website, metropolitancouncil.org, and download these documents. They are really boring, somewhat interesting, but really boring, and they are based on regionally macroeconomic, demographic assumptions about the markets are, you know, the real estate markets are doing, and that, they are shared, and they are, we are told what they are by the Metropolitan Council, because if you think back to a few slides ago, the Metropolitan Council cares about the region, and they want to make sure that our regional, our growth aligns with those of our neighbors and the rest of the region as they go about planning bus routes, transportation, sewer capacity, not the most exciting things in the world, kind of important for a city. It's important to remember, Met Council forecasts are not targets or goals. We don't get punished if we don't grow enough, we don't get rewarded if we grow more than we're expected to grow. It is simply a planning tool that's done on a systematic basis across the seven-county metro area, because they are the ones that need to figure out where the roads need to go, where the buses need to go, where the sewer lines need to be put. And finally, the Metropolitan Council officially adjusts these on a 10-year cycle that coincides with the comprehensive plan process, but they do often update them based on market changes and changes in data that they are getting, and this recently occurred with Edina and several other cities, so the number does tend to fluctuate. Of course, it's a 2040 forecast, so 24 years from now, they're making, I'll call it a guess, as to what the population of Edina will be. And, you know, we can probably pick holes in any of those assumptions, but it's important to know that the Met Council expects some growth in Edina's population, and I'll get into why that is important. If I can push the button. There we go. Can you move to the next slide? Great, sorry about that. So, so why use forecasts? And I think there's, there's two reasons why we have to use the Metropolitan Council forecast. One, they tell us we have to. It's in their rules that if you are, the city must respond in its comprehensive plan to the population forecast provided to us by the Metropolitan Council. If we do not respond, or address, or just shape our plan to address those concerns, they will reject the plan, send it back to us, and we'll be starting this process all over again. So, that's the expedient reason why we need to pay, this needs to be done. But the second reason it's important to pay attention to those forecasts is, it really does shape the plan you are, we are creating. Since we believe, and no reason to, you know, and we can argue about forecasts and what that trend looks like in 24 years, we believe there's going to be some growth in Edina. That shapes a plan where we know we're going to have renewal, that new families will be moving into Edina, that there will be some turnover, that things are going to take shape and be different than they are today. If we were to assume there were to be no growth in Edina, that would be a very, very different comprehensive plan, because we would not need to address issues like parks and, you know, expanding transportation opportunities, putting in sidewalks, because we'd be dealing with a situation most likely where the city is aging. So, having some understanding of direction where the, where you're growing is an important fundamental part of the public process, of the comprehensive plan process. And as, as, you know, we can list out the reasons, but we have to be prepared for that growth because, or changes, or lack of growth, because that fundamentally shapes the plan. Attempt to change the slide again. Okay, did it again.
You're doing it again. Todd, go sit down.
I'm going to go sit down.
Well, I think, maybe just also, just to emphasize, again, why to accommodate growth, going through that, I think it's good to read those off, you know, funding the public services, keeping the residents here, supporting workplace innovation, enabling multimodal transportation options, and advancing regional sustainability. Those are all focuses that we really looked at throughout this whole comprehensive plan.
Okay. So, as you kind of think from the bigger forecasting perspective, the Metropolitan Council, fortunately for us, actually divides the seven-county metro area into 12,001 separate traffic areas, traffic analysis zones, otherwise known as TASs. We have 44 of those in Edina, and this is Edina laid out by traffic analysis zones, and that to the Metropolitan Council is the most important thing. Now, the numbers that are highlighted are actually just the numbers of the zone, they're not population figures, but unfortunately, that's the way our graphing software puts things up, but as you can see, only eight, eight of our 48, 44 TASs, or 18%, are forecast to have increased population between now and 2040. The remaining 36, or 82%, are forecasted to remain the same, or actually decrease in population. And all the areas where we're seeing projecting increases in population are the same areas that were identified in the 2008 plan as areas of potential change. So, really, what we're seeing now is just a continuation of what we saw in 2008, that these areas were going to change. We put small area plans in place, and now, we have very good frameworks to, to shape the redevelopment of those areas.
And again, those are all the small area plans that we reviewed and approved.
Hi, good evening. For those of you that do not know me, my name is M.J. Lehman, and I'm the city's community engagement coordinator. I was able to support the project team specifically around the 30-day review process that happened with the comprehensive plan, so I'm here to give an overview. Hi, Planning Commission, you've heard some of this, but I'm going to give a little more info than I gave the last time. So, the comprehensive plan, the draft comprehensive plan went through a 30-day review process, and the dates were March 7th through April 8th. We had a couple of different ways that individuals could, could participate that we sent out to let people know, bettertogetheredina.org. Most of you maybe have already visited. If you haven't, check it out, get signed up and registered. Also, people were able to send in comments via mail as well, in case they were not able to access the site. By the numbers, this is just the quick, what was the action and the engagement that was happening on the, on the website, but we did have over 1,500 visits to the site. Most of the visitors we had in one day was 185, and I'll talk about what that day was a little bit later. We had an FAQ, and we did have 27 people visit that FAQ. Our question and answers, that was available for anyone to ask a question, and city staff was sitting ready to give an answer. We had seven individuals actually submit nine questions to us. We did have the comment form, that was the main way that individuals actually gave public input into the draft comprehensive plan, and we had 27 individuals submit 105 comments through that form. The documents that were available, of course, were those draft chapters and the small area plans. We had 21 documents available for downloading. 78 people downloaded a document, and 106 documents were downloaded, and maybe you can guess the documents that were downloaded the most, but the three, the top three were 50th and France, 7th and Cahill, and Southdale, closely followed by the other small area plans as well. This is just a little visual about the visitors. The system actually kind of has different levels of how individuals are engaged that were visiting the site. So, when we say aware visitors, we had 1,049 individuals that came to the site and knew that the site was, that existed. The next level is informed, which we had, can't read, 253, so of course, those individuals were aware, and at the same time, they maybe took one more step. They maybe clicked on something, did something, visit another project page when they were on Better Together, et cetera. The 31 engaged visitors, those went another step, where they actually participated in some type of tool that we had available on our project site, and so, we did have 31 people that did it. The cool thing about this graph, those peaks, it really shows us when our communications went out to the public. That first peak on the far left, of course, is May, March 7th, so that's when we first hit the public with the Better Together site and the public review process on there. 105 people right away went to the site. That big one, which we talked about, 185 people visited in a day, is that big peak in the middle, which has to do with March 21st, when we did our second push. And then, of course, we had a little outreach at the end on April 3rd, what gave us another little peak where we had 65 people come to the site. You may wonder how people are getting there. This is just a common question I get, is like, "How are we letting people know? How are they getting there?" Well, a lot of people are actually getting there by direct URL, is putting in Better Together, edina.org, or doing a search function. Of course, that second one, social media, we do a lot of pushes with social media, and third one, .gov, edinamn.gov. People were on the site, and they're actually being directed to Better Together to participate in the 30-day comment period. Okay, last slide. What did we accomplish with this? We did a couple of things. Awareness, more people in the community probably know about the comprehensive plan now that we had it available, and we were able to get them involved in the public input process. And we have a larger engagement foundation, because we had 225 visitors that went to the comp plan page, but they also visited another project page. So, they came there, got interested, or came there for something else and got interested in the comprehensive plan. Registrations, just from this page, we were able to have 35 new people actually get registered, register to be a part of the Better Together community. Communications, those peaks that we were talking about, they align with our outreaches, so we were able to see how our communication, communication efforts were getting out to the public to show us that people were coming based off of us letting you know that it was available. And information, we were able to keep information on there, have it available for the public, and continue to have it live there, so at any point, individuals can go there. I'm still getting downloads of the documents that are happening to this point, because they're still available for people to review, so, good accomplishments.
All right. So, what are we doing with all that information that we've been receiving? We, we set up a process, we had a spreadsheet where we tabulated every comment that we received, and we created categories so that we could keep track of which ones, you know, what we want to do with those comments. So, the categories included change, and that's where we would have a change made in the version for the Met Council. The other category was potential change, and that's where the Planning Commission considered potential change. So, we had several work sessions where we would review these comments, and we would make those decisions. And the last one was where there'd be no change, and then, we would also document the reason why we did that, or else, we would refer to other commissions or staff to consider. Then, we also had where we, the plan doesn't address this level of detail or potential follow-up for study, and then, the last one was, the question was already answered within that statement. So, that number five under no change, that, that's a big one, because I think one of the exciting things also about the comp plan, just like the 2008, where it identified those areas of potential change, this one has also identified where we need to have further study. You know, the comp plan just can't go into that detail, but we really saw where there's a need, such as like a housing study and, you know, infrastructure, things like that. So, that's, that will be things that we will be moving forward with in the next years. So, the next step, so we had 53 of the 90, so we received 95 comments. 53 of them resulted in changes or improvements to the draft plan, and then, there is also a full report that's available on that website that M.J. mentioned. So, the schedule, we just keep adding the little green checkpoints. So, we're at the Planning Commission public meeting at the, right now, and then, where it's going to be in front of the city council, and of course, I can't read these. So... So May 7th will be the City Council Public Hearing. And then, as Todd mentioned, that goes out for a six-month review process. We also have that opportunity. We get the opportunity to review the comp plans around the cities around us, too. So that's an important piece. Then I will go back, I'll be back in front of the Planning Commission for the final approval sometime in November. And then, in December, the final approval by the City Council. And then, we submit it to the Met Council by December 31st. And we have, it was supposed to be done, you know, December of 2018, but we did a one-year extension. We're not alone, a lot of cities have done that. But there was just a lot of work in this, and so we requested that extension. The final one is just a thank you. I mean, again, this has just been a long process, very, you know, very intense at times, but very, also just rewarding. But, you know, we've just had so much input from residents, businesses, all the commissions, the small area plan working groups were awesome, the City Council, and then the city staff. So it's just been a group effort, and we're pretty excited with what we've got. And that's it. And I guess we're going to go back up and open it up for public hearing, or open the public hearing. But I'm just looking now at the rest of the comprehensive plan task force. Did any of you have anything you wanted to add before we open it up to the public? Don't have to. We'll have a chance to talk later. Okay. And I forgot to mention, too, that we've got Bill Smith and Dan Cornejo, part of the consulting team, is here to also answer questions and played a big role in this. All right, so now we're opening up for the public hearing. Everyone gets three minutes to speak. Sorry, trying to get readjusted here. We would ask that if a comment has been made, maybe not to keep repeating it. We'd like to keep hearing new comments. We've also received the letters. How many did we get, Carrie? Like 100?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 120. I'm looking to Liz, around 120.
So we have received those, and we have that documented. So, letters that were kind of opposed to some of the, what the comp plan is recommending. Anyway, so opening it up for public hearing. You can go to either podium, just state your name and your address. And anyone who wants to speak can come forward.
Hello, my name is Julie Rissler. I live at 611 Ashford Avenue. And I want to thank you for your work. I've worked on the 2008 comp plan. I was a planning commissioner at that time. I haven't been involved in this particular comp plan. I did look at it online. I was very disappointed to see the way that the change area I live close to, near Wooddale and Valley View, has been shown on the map. And if we could get, I do see it is up there. It's not accurate. This area here was changed. It was amended. It was amended because the developer asked for the amendment. It drove it. These houses no longer exist. They now belong to Edina Flats. On every single map that occurs in the comprehensive plan, my small plan area is misrepresented. It's misrepresented on the existing land use map. It's even misrepresented on the future land use map. So that's a big problem. I went to the zoning site, because I thought surely the zoning site will be more up to date. It's even less up to date. I really feel that this speaks to the need to have greater transparency in the residents of Edina at minimum, when they're looking at the comp plan, deserve to see accurate maps. I did submit a comment. I've been looking online, the maps have not been updated. I would respectfully request that they're updated in time so that people can look at them. It's possible, my area is not the only area that has been misrepresented. And people deserve to have accurate maps before City Council meets. The other thing that I really want to talk about is that when we talk about comprehensive plans, it is beautiful to think about a vision. I love comprehensive plans. I've worked on them in terms of working for a business. Where's my time? I can't, anyway. I've also worked, you know, as a citizen, I don't, I live near this area, and it really makes me nervous that developers drive change, not the vision. And I've seen that happen over and over again, particularly in this area. Bull Run never got built, but it changed our code. We can now put in, drive-through windows, you only need a 20-foot setback. The waters went in, in an R1 zoning area, but again, the comp plan was amended for the developer. And so I really, really want to see a comp plan that's not going to have to be amended. And I also would like to believe that the vision of this community and all of the hard work, I listened to what you have done. You've done so much, and people have volunteered, they spent their time. I have to scoot, I've got stuff I've got to do. But the thing is, it should be driven by the people throughout, and it shouldn't be individual developers. And when that happens, that means that other developers do not have the same kind of chances. And so this is something that's a disservice, not to just the residents of our community, but to developers all over the place. And I really hope that these maps get updated soon. Finally, I'd like to just show, this is what it looks like now. The houses have been, three of the houses have been removed. There's this huge dirt pile by this other house with a caterpillar right on top of it. And Edina Flats has also purchased another area of land. And you can see in this plan, sorry, I have so many images. This is going up right now. Here's the dirt pile where the houses used to be. This is another parcel that they have purchased. Look how close it is to that house, okay? And when we have development happening like that, it's really disconcerting to residents. It's also something, when I look at this area, it's a wonderful, vibrant area. It does have affordable housing. But what's going in right now is certainly not that. It's really expensive, and it really is gentrification. I'm going to stop now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't want any of the claps, or boos, or... Everyone has their own opinion. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Douglas. I live at 3915 West 42nd in Morningside. I downloaded the comprehensive plan today and skimmed it, all 436 pages of it. And it's impressive, and I'm sure you all did a lot of work. And I applaud the effort. But I think for purposes of this evening, if I may make a suggestion, it's all interesting to know what the process was and how transparent it was, and how many people wrote in, and how many people clicked on the website. And with all due respect to Ms. Lehman, I really don't care how many people clicked on the website. I think it would be helpful if the commission, in five minutes or less, could simply tell us, what changes are you proposing for our city? Why are you proposing the changes? And how do you think it's going to affect those of us who live here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Brown, 5512 Park Place, over in East Edina. 30-year-plus resident, Edina graduate, a former Edina Transportation Commission member. Really disappointed in the transportation section. If you're going to stack that kind of density in there, there has to be a real discussion about transportation that really, really helps the citizens of Edina deal with this kind of density. And as somebody who commutes to work every single day, I really appreciate sitting in traffic, you know, most of my life. So I don't think this was well done. I'm sorry. The level of density is unacceptable, especially with the lack of services. You look at St. Louis Park, they've got covered transportation, bus shelters, and, you know, Edina's version of a bus stop is a sign in a snowbank, so. And then, also really, really concerned about Southwest Light Rail and the effect that that's going to have in the transportation patterns. And I don't think that's well-covered in this. It's the state's largest-ever public works project, and I don't see good planning regarding how that's going to affect traffic patterns and how that's going to affect Edina, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Frankel. I guess my issue is really the lack of meat within the actual fire department issues in the comp plan. A major thing that's missing out of there is the rating the City of Edina Fire Department gets, which affects all our insurance policies, which is called an ISO rating. Edina, right now, has a rating of four. And in comparison, the higher, the lower the number, the better. Minneapolis and St. Paul have a rating of two. Minnetonka has a rating of three. And as noted in the comp plan, response times are growing in Edina, mainly because of traffic issues. The one thing that really surprises me, I had a conversation yesterday with the head of the Minneapolis Firefighters Union. And to my surprise, and I'm not an expert by any means in firefighting, but for some reason, there's two ways you can respond to fires as far as what's referred to as mutual aid, which Edina has with its neighboring suburbs. Most of the suburbs have what we call automatic response. So if there's a fire in Edina, surrounding suburbs get the call, 911 call the same time as Edina does. Minneapolis is not on auto-response for Edina. But they are on auto-response for Richfield, which I'm a little confused about. And the reality is, the Edina Fire, the Minneapolis Fire Department on Upton and 50th is minutes away from 50th and France, whereas Fire Station Number One is a good 10-plus minutes away. I live in that area, and for me to hear that we could have responses quicker by the Minneapolis Fire Department than the Edina Fire Department, I don't understand that at all. Why aren't they on auto-response with the City of Edina, since they are so close? And the closest fire station to the Morningside area is the Minneapolis Fire Station Number 22 on Excelsior Boulevard off of Lake Calhoun. I've never seen a discussion about mutual aid as to why we're not working closer with the city of Minneapolis. I just don't understand it at all. The other issue is, Minneapolis does not train with the City of Edina Fire Department. So for instance, God forbid, there's an unfortunate of a mass shooting, for instance, at one of our schools, Minneapolis Fire Department does not train with them, with any of the suburban fire departments, because they're not asked to. So if they're not automatically called, and as the head of the Minneapolis Fire Union said, at a mass shooting, it's organized chaos. Is somebody going to realize that Edina High School, the Minneapolis Fire Department's not there? They're the largest fire department in Minnesota, and they're not going to do an auto-response to a mass shooting? How does that happen? They're not trained. They'd be hesitant to help out at a large catastrophic event because they have never trained with Edina and surrounding suburbs. All the fire departments use different protocols. They handle fires slightly different. And again, I'm not an expert. Something that, you know, the comp plan should have brought in Minneapolis Fire Department to ask some of these questions. They all know each other, you know, it's a tight bunch. The other thing is, the comp plan doesn't mention the Edina Fire Department has a 30-year-old truck on loaner from the USDA, because there was an accident a year or two ago, and that's being replaced with a new set of fire trucks. But to just ignore that, the Fire Department's not proud of it because it's an old truck they try not to use. But it should have been in the comp plan. The good and the bad should be in the comp plan. But my point is, Edina has to be on auto-response with the City of Minneapolis. And for the life of me, I don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Henemeth. I live on 6200 Brookview. And I have a whole spiel of things that I would like to talk about, but can't fit them all in. So I'm going to go over two things that I think are very significant flaws in this plan. The first being that the Met Council designates the City of Edina as an urban district. The comp plan that's proposed is designating us as an urban center district, which we are not. And it doesn't even disclose this. And the reason this is happening is because urban is defined by the Met Council as 10 units per net developable acre. We are proposing 20 units per net acre in our city. That's the equivalent of what Minneapolis has, not what Edina should have. And that's a big problem that we need to fix in our comp plan. The second thing, I think, is the most important issue is traffic. And the traffic studies that WSB has been completing are flawed in the sense that, one, the project studies that they do does not take into consideration the area outside of the scope of the study. And that's a flaw. Number two is that those studies do not take into consideration the actual allowable maximum density that's being proposed in this plan, which is a huge flaw. It's only taking into consideration estimates based on historical traffic patterns, based on land use. And those two factors are really predominant factors in the infrastructure, how this plan's going to work, everything involved with this comp plan for the next 10 years and beyond. So I think those two things really need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Is there a motion to... Oh, go. You almost missed your chance.
Good evening, Chair Olson, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Hope Melton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road in Edina. At a recent City Council meeting, three young women called for the city to address climate change. They cited the latest Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report, that we have approximately 10 years to significantly change how we live if we are to avoid the worst consequences of global warming. Their call was urgent. But in order to solve the climate crisis, we have to solve our housing crisis. According to a recent New York Times article, multiple climate scientists at the University of California, Berkeley, studied the carbon footprint of 700 California cities. They concluded that housing built in urban areas near transit, jobs, and services reduced greenhouse pollution more than any other option, including electric cars. The relationship between housing and traffic emissions is straightforward. When high-demand cities like Edina erect barriers to affordable housing through large tracts of low-density, single-family zoning that exclude multifamily buildings, the price of land soars, pricing out low- and modern-income households. Their outward search to find affordable housing increases long-distance commuting and carbon emissions. According to a 2018 report to council, approximately 40,000 people commute in and out of Edina daily. This is not only because people can't find affordable housing here, but because our low housing densities preclude the economic feasibility of more widespread and successful mass transit. Yes, we can do better, Edina, but the question is, better for whom? Who benefits from inaccurate and minimal-growth forecasts, rigid status quo zoning from the 2008 comp plan that drives up land prices and inhibits the creation of workforce housing with the consequences that I've just described? Ask yourself, who benefits? With Edina's 2018 comprehensive plan, however, we all benefit. The citizens of Edina created this plan. It starts with their 2015 Vision Edina Statement and involved the hard and excellent work of Edina residents, city staff, and consultants over several years. Its flexible zoning regulations enable denser housing near public transit and commercial services, largely in the Southdale area. In other words, it promotes environmentally sustainable and equitable In other words, it promotes environmentally sustainable and equitable growth, a socio-economically balanced and diverse community. If you have no sense of urgency about climate change, you're not awake. The 2018 Plan Before You offers a significant opportunity to change the way we live for the sake of our community, our children and grandchildren, and our planet. I urge you to approve the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Romer, and I live at 6521 Creek Drive. Thank you to the Planning Commission and the city staff for their thoughtful and careful work on the Comprehensive Plan. I have attended its work sessions and public meetings over many months, and I am deeply appreciative of the attention they have focused on developing this document and the comments offered by Edina citizens. I am especially grateful for the anticipation of and planning for population growth and density issues in Edina, particularly, one, positive environmental consequences and mitigating negative impacts on our environment; two, providing a variety of transportation modes, including walking and biking in the Southdale and Neighborhood Small Area Plans; three, protecting and maintaining undeveloped areas and parks throughout the city; four, providing an increased tax base through new developments, which will protect, or perhaps even lower, current residential property taxes; and finally, recognizing and addressing the need for affordable housing in Edina for senior citizens, workers, and young families whose children will populate our schools. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Barry Rosenthal, 6205 Scotia Drive, and I just wanted to add my support for the plan. It's not perfect, but the process was fair. It was really a lot of work. I followed it, and I think it's a good plan, even if it's not perfect, and we can't get perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to close the public hearing. I don't remove that.
My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this comprehensive plan. It's well thought out, it's coherent, it's grounded in strong guiding principles. I'm going to commend the Planning Commission and the city staff and the outside consultants in three specific areas. First, I want to commend them for effort and vision. The document represents a tremendous commitment of time, thought, and energy. I can attest that the Planning Commission spent many, many hours creating and debating this document. I've had the privilege since December of sitting in almost all of the Planning Commission meetings and work sessions, as well as the City Council meetings and the HRA meetings. So I feel very confident that I can commend you for that effort. Second, I want to commend the Planning Commission for its openness and its transparency. All of their meetings, including the work sessions, are open to the public. They work hard with the staff to create a website that allowed easy access to and an easy way to comment on the entire plan document. I read three of the chapters in detail. I submitted 18 comments. I was pleased to see that all but one made it into the official amendments. I will talk to some folks about why the one I didn't get into the amendments failed. I'm interested in that one in particular. Third, I want to commend the Planning Commission for their commitment to affordable housing. Their commitment is not one of lip service to the idea. This commitment is reflected in affordable housing being woven throughout the document. Thank you very much for that. I want to conclude by saying the best word I can use to summarize the last five months of listening to this work is trust. I've developed a strong sense that the Planning Committee, Commission, and the city staff can be trusted. This trust has been earned in part by their dedication, your hard work, and your openness. It's also been earned by the work they've done to translate this document into actual approved projects that deliver on the vision and the principles that are in this document. In particular, the project at 7200 and 7250 France, which has 62 affordable units for the next 25 years, along with 45% of the project devoted to public realm benefits like the ones described in this plan. None of us can predict the future, but I trust the Planning Commission will help ensure that Edina is an even better place to live than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Brammer. I live at 6001 Ewing Avenue South, and I also would like to express my gratitude to everyone who's worked on this plan. As Barry Rosenthal mentioned, it does have some imperfections, and I agree with the person who mentioned more understanding of transportation and how that might change over time as a result of some of these changes. I'd like to see much more public transit available. I'd also like to see more attention to a problem that was raised but wasn't really addressed in the plan, which is the preservation of affordable, single-family homes. I live in a neighborhood with many of these, and they're getting torn down at such a high rate that it's going to be very hard to keep up with the production of, and with producing enough affordable housing to replace the affordable housing that's being removed. Many families are not interested in renting an apartment, and most of, very few of those are going to be three-bedroom units in any case. A lot of people would like yards, and I think the planning process should really look outside the box on how are we really going to preserve the affordable, single-family homes and the affordable neighborhoods that we have? As Julie Rissler also mentioned, we, it just seems that every time this comes up, people just throw up their hands and say, well, you know, how can we do this? There must be ways to do this, and I think some serious brainstorming is in order, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I was guilty once, but I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Great. So bringing it back to Planning Commission, we hear a lot of good comments. Should we just, like, walk through these and see if we have responses, or should I do that? Okay. And let's see. So as far as the incorrect maps and such, I know that we've been documenting that. I don't know, Bill, if you want to address that, but explain when those amendments will be made to the comp plan, where we've seen, you know, incorrect attachments or exhibits and figures and... Yeah, that's good.
William Smith, project manager for the Comprehensive Plan Study and with BCOB Associates. I should mention as well, Dan Cornejo, who's also part of the consulting team, is here this evening. Let me apologize if the map is incorrect in the Comprehensive Plan. That is something that we will clearly address. We have a process now that is in place, and I think we might want to do something a little bit differently. The process that's in place now is for the document that was posted on Better Together to remain in place, and then there will be comments, the comments, in fact, that we have received already, that we would hold those, and then go to the City Council with that document and, in addition, the comments that we have received, and then, in addition, comments that we've received tonight. So we wouldn't, our plan at this point was not to make revisions to the document until the City Council has had an opportunity to review it, and there is a hearing before the Council. In this particular case with the maps, we'll get on that right away, and I think we should perhaps make, post that change on Better Together immediately. So we'll get going on that right away.
And if I could add to that, too, I noticed in some of the maps that she showed, the zoning maps are incorrect, too, so we will get on, we will get on those right away, too, to make those corrections.
Thank you. Then we also heard for each of us to explain what we think the comp plan is doing. I might put that off till we're done with these other questions, but I think that's a good opportunity for us to say what the comp plan is providing. I agree. I think that's an important point. So we'll come back to that one. Go for it.
So in addition, I think she also pointed out, maybe it's worth checking out the other small area plans, make sure those maps are correct, too, so not just Wooddale Valley View, but if the planning staff as well as the consultants can just make sure 44th and France, 50th and France, other ones are accurate as well.
Yeah, good point.
That is a good point. The, with that Valley View, Wooddale, you remember, that was the one that was done a couple of years ago, and it's going to weave into the plan. And the project that was shown, there was an expansion of the boundary that went along with that project, and that's where that, that's where the boundaries are incorrect on the plan. It's that expansion that took place.
Now, this is a question probably for Carrie. It was shown that additional parcel. Is that something that we reviewed, or will need to review as a planning commission, or is it already?
You already reviewed that as part of the, that project, and the Comprehensive Plan was amended to expand that boundary. That's the part that was missed within the, within this update.
Okay, so there's an additional parcel, and it was, it did meet, it didn't require any, did it require a variance in any way? Because I just noticed that it looked like it didn't have, quite have the step back to the residential area.
Yes, yeah, there were variances and an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, so did it meet the requirements for the step back to the residential area?
The variances were approved as part of the project, so you reviewed them as part of that proposal.
Okay.
So there were exceptions, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next I had in my list was, talk about the transportation chapter, the density and how that's going to impact transit, transportation, and the Southwest LRT was not covered. So I don't know if you want to address that, Bill. I guess, you know, you might address this, too, but one of the things with the density, you know, being opposed to it, we kind of need that density to get transit. That's one of the reasons Edina has poor transit coverage, and we just don't have the demand. But go ahead.
Absolutely. Commissioners, regarding the transportation analysis that was done for the chapter, for the transportation chapter, an extensive study was conducted by WSB consultants, and I believe, in fact, they did two studies looking specifically at the Southdale area, and identified intersections and other capacity deficiencies that would occur, some that occurred now, and some that will occur in the future with additional change, population change and increased density. And their analysis showed that those capacity deficiencies could be mitigated with the addition of turn lanes, et cetera, all very reasonable kinds of mitigation improvements that could be made, not necessarily extensive work that needs to be done to get those capacity deficiencies taken care of. Regarding transit, your point is well taken, that increasing density will make transit all the more viable for the city of Edina. The 44th and France Small Area Plan talked about transit, as well, the 50th and France Small Area Plan talked about transit, and the District, Southdale District Plan additionally talked about transit. Transit is really dependent, it requires density. I believe regular bus is sort of something like 15 dwelling units per acre. In order to have more frequent bus service, the density needs to be higher. Interestingly, the city is involved now in studying the E-line, which is a bus rapid transit line that could potentially run down France, and this would be, I think, in my opinion, a really great addition. It would connect Minneapolis to Edina in a way that isn't connected now, would essentially take the place of Route 6, and provide high-frequency transit service with transit, and with less frequent stops, however. So this means that the buses, the bus rapid transit could move more rapidly down the corridor. And when you can improve travel time, then you attract additional riders. So I think the point is well taken by the commenter, that transit needs, by several commenters, that transit needs to be improved. The plan, I think, makes some allowances for that and does talk about how transit could be improved in the area. We can certainly look at the chapter and look again and see if there are ways that we can strengthen that even further. I think that's very important. Transit is a key, as we learned with the 50th and France, and with 44th and France Small Area Plans, and with the Southdale District Plan. Transit is something that's going to be very important to accompany the development that's projected to occur in the future.
About Southwest LRT, did that get discussed?
I think Southwest LRT was likely mentioned. I don't know that we look specifically at the traffic impacts that would occur. LRT is supposed to help to reduce traffic volumes on highways, and that would be the impact that I would expect to occur. Metro Transit also, in planning LRT, plans what they call feeder routes, and so there would be feeder buses that would take people from their trip productions, their homes, to the LRT stations. So there could potentially be increases in traffic because of LRT, but the strategy really is to see that get reduced. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to address that, too, since I was on the Transportation Commission, and I'm also on the E-line Community Advisory Committee, and we just had a meeting last night talking about the E-line. But first, let me talk about SWLRT. So it is mentioned, I just searched for it, there was a couple paragraphs about it in the transportation chapter, and, you know, I think it is so new, new, it's not even done yet, right? They just shoveled the first piece of dirt last fall. So it'll be done in 2023, and so I think we have plenty of time to, I mean, that's practically halfway through the 10-year plan, so I think we have plenty of time to plan for that, and I think the transportation, or the, engineering department and Transportation Commission will certainly look at that. I think it's good to point that out, that we need to look at that. I know that, living in Morningside and living near St. Louis Park, I'm kind of attuned to their plans for, for example, bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure, and I know that Edina is working with them on bicycle and pedestrian ways to get back and forth between stations, so I know that's something that we're working on. As far as the E-line, the meeting we had last night was talking about what the pathway was. So originally, the E-line was going to be just this short, ABRT is, means arterial bus rapid transit. So the idea is you want to go down just one or two streets and have a very reproducible, very frequent, simple-to-use transit. And so the idea was, originally it was going to be from downtown, basically to uptown, and then go west on Lake Street to where the green line is. After some feedback from residents and other cities, they decided they needed to look into whether it might be extended further north to the U, and then further south potentially to Edina or Minneapolis. And so they've been working on this for over a year now, and what we were told last night is that... And what we were told last night is that they're looking at having it go to Southdale, the way the Sixth Line does. It won't go south of Southdale, but it'll go to Southdale. But the big question now is whether it'll go down France or whether it goes down Xerxes. And so, and it'll go to the university, too. So they've extended extensively on both ends. And part of the issue with whether it goes down France or whether it goes down Xerxes is the pattern of development and the density. So what they find is that on Xerxes, there's more density, but it's kind of spread out. And as Bill said, ABRT has fewer stops, they have fewer stations. And so what you really want is kind of little nodes that it goes to, so that that's where the population is concentrated. And oddly enough, to some people, Edina has those nodes because France Avenue originally was a streetcar line. And so Forty Fourth and France, Fiftieth and France, and Fifty Fourth and France were all nodes on that line. And so that's the perfect half-mile stops that they're looking for. So they still haven't decided which route they're going to take, but we have a strong case, I think, for France Avenue because of the historic street line that was there. And as Bill said, ABRT is different from a regular bus line. There are fewer stations. The stations are like transit stations, and so you pay before you board, and every bus is going to be an articulated bus. So they're going to be like double buses, basically, and they'll come every 10 minutes. So it'll be far faster than it is today. And that'll be all day and all weekend. So it'll be a huge upgrade, whether it goes on Xerxes or France, it'll benefit Edina either way. But it'll be a huge upgrade for the city. And I know, for example, as MJ was saying, the Better Together Edina site is asking for input on 58th Street, for example, for sidewalks and a bikeway. And that will lead into presumably a station at 58th Street and either France or Xerxes. So the city is already working on these things, and they're currently working on, I think it's 54th Street, this year, working on extending that sidewalk. So the city is definitely working on ways to get our city to work better with transit.
And just to add on to that, so the comp plan does address that, what you just mentioned, and all of these items, and supports that, so, okay. Anything else on the transit piece? So then we get into the fire department and the rating and the auto response, and where is that addressed? Can you?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Dan Cornejo, I'm part of the consultant team. I was the major author for the Community Services and Facilities Chapter, and I worked with the fire department, the police department, actually, the schools in Hennepin County on the chapter. During the comprehensive plan process, the fire department actually contracted a consultant called Five Bugles Design. It took about a year or so to do their study, and what they did, they looked at the response times in the stations, the capacity of the current fire stations, and also whether they're in the right locations. What they did not look at, or at least I'm pretty sure they didn't look at, the interaction between our fire department and then the city of Minneapolis are our neighbors. So that's something that I think, you know, after this meeting, we'll make sure that we get involved in those discussions. Because I don't think the study looked at the firefighter training and, you know, and how they work with other people. But anyway, on the station location, the study looked at Fire Station Number Two, which is on York, and concluded that the station is inadequate. It probably, it needs to be expanded, and it probably needs to be relocated just to the north, so in that same corridor. But most of the newer density is going to come around the Southdale Mall. And so they figure moving the station a little bit northward would be good. They also, the chapter also talks about maybe combining some redevelopment with that station. And then also using the current station site, maybe for redevelopment, for housing. So there's, you know, it's kind of like a chess game, but the end of that game, though, is that the response times will be better for that quadrant. The other major recommendation which they made was, they said, there's probably a need now in the next, within the next 10 years, to do Fire Station Number Three. And that would be somewhere in the Grandview City Hall area, around here. With the density proposed for the Grandview area, Fiftieth and France, Forty Fourth and France, there's a need for a station up in this area. So that's documented in the Community Services Chapter. There is also a map from that study that shows the current response times. So I hope that answers the question there.
Was there any other comments on that? Questions? Okay. Thank you, Dan. Am I missing, about the preservation of the affordable single-family homes, I believe that is going to be one of the focus points of the housing plan, right? So, which we're all really excited about. It's going to be a very detailed and extensive housing plan. When, is that going to get, do we know when that's going to get started?
Yes, that will probably be started within the next month or two.
Okay.
So it will, likely, it will take place during the time we're out for that six-month review.
Okay, great. So I, you know, I think that that's going to be definitely covered, because it was a concern for all of us, or me, I shouldn't include everybody. Anyone else have any comments on that?
Carrie, can you quick highlight what that will encompass for people?
If we had the scope all drawn up and ready to go, I could. But that is something that we're still working on.
So my understanding was that this was a housing task force that the city council has directed our city manager to come back with a proposal, and that this proposal is probably expected at the council early May, and then work would get started. So the task force, the idea is that we, the sense was that the housing chapter, in some ways, is not complete in terms of the level of guidance that we are hoping to give. There is great hope that once that task force is formed, that they can probably complete the study as of yet by the end of the year. That's not a promise, but that's the hope. If there is to be information gleaned from that, certainly, it can still be incorporated, if we so choose, into the housing chapter. Or if it's missed sort of that deadline for submission to the council, whatever came out of that could also be added as an amendment to the comp plan later. So I think it was good that the council recognized that there are so many pieces to our housing supply. When we talk about population growth and number of households forecasted, we're making some direct assumptions about what type of, and the quantity, and where this housing is going to go. And yet, we haven't really fully fleshed that out. So I think from the foresight from the council, they recognized this and said, let's get going and see if we can form that task force. So I think that's sort of how I understand it right now.
Did I miss any? Did anyone else have any notes of questions that were brought up? Yeah?
Yeah, there was a mention about the definition of urban and urban center. And I think that was a good point, because it, I don't know if there's a literal one-to-one correlation between our density figures and Met Council's definition of urban center. But it's true that Edina has been designated urban, which is not quite as dense as an urban center. The city of Minneapolis is urban center. But I think the point was made that if Met Council is using 20 dwelling units per acre as sort of the standard for an urban center, sort of the minimum density they would expect to see for the land use in an urban center, then I guess the question is, so how is it that Edina, being designated urban, is proposing significantly higher densities, far exceeding in excess of even the urban center? Again, I'm not sure that there's a one-to-one correlation, because we use our densities in somewhat a different manner. And of course, they use that base as a minimum density to be defined as an urban center. So I'm not quite sure what the right response to that is.
That, Bill or Dan, do you have something? Oh, you got it. Go, Tom.
I actually happen to have the, believe it or not, because I love all things planning, I have a copy of the urban section from the local planning handbook from the Met Council. And as Susan said, that is a minimum of 10 units per acre, 20 units per acre. And they're also talking about the overall density expectations for new development in that area. So not a particular site, but rather the whole area that is being redeveloped. And if, actually, if you read through, and it's an 11-page PDF, it actually does a fairly nice job of describing what we're seeing in the small area plans, the redevelopment, the target around transportation, you know. So it's actually, I think, fairly accurate. But again, the numbers are only one measure out of an 11-page document, and it is a minimum, not a maximum or a target. That's just what they expect.
So I heard one other thing. I'm not sure it's necessarily a comment for the comprehensive plan, but perhaps a question for Carrie. I heard a comment that expressed concern about how traffic studies are done. And Carrie, I'm wondering if you could, the comment was basically, I caught a couple of things. It doesn't account for the area outside the, traffic studies don't account for the area outside the scope of the study, and it only addresses land use and historical use as opposed to maximum allowable, I interpret that as some idea of maximum allowable vehicles on a road or something. Could you maybe address how traffic studies are, discuss how traffic studies are done and how these concepts are covered or will be covered?
Yeah, I don't know if I can speak to how traffic studies are done. I'm not a traffic engineer. But I can say that the WSB studies did take into account our top-end densities within the Southdale area, so that those were factored in. I know our consultant, Mr. Smith, is well-versed in transportation. Maybe he could add something.
Commissioners, I may be able to address that. I hope I don't confuse the issue any further. I'm not exactly sure what the comment was addressing. Was it traffic, what we call a traffic impact study? And that's a study where there is a proposed development, and then you analyze that development specifically to determine how it's, the traffic that it generates will affect its surround, the streets, the adjacent streets. Or was the commenter talking about a transportation study, for example, like the study that WSB did, where you're looking at a large corridor like the Southdale, France, along the south, in the greater Southdale District? I could comment on either of those. I think, though, that one of the things that the comprehensive plan, in fact, does recommend, and that is that the city has the discretion to say, for a traffic impact study, that we would like you, when you determine the impact of a development, to look not only at the streets that are immediately adjacent to the development, but we want you to look a little bit further to see what the neighborhood impacts would be. Now, this was one of the comments that was provided to us through Better Together Edina, and this is one of the comments that made the list, that yes, there would be a change. In fact, it's in the Fiftieth and France Small Area Plan, I think it's in the Forty Fourth and France Small Area Plan. I don't think we included that in the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan, because that issue did not come up. But the city has taken steps to ensure that adjacent neighborhoods, the impact, traffic impacts, would be addressed. So consequently, for Forty Fourth and France, we talked about calming, measures to calm traffic west of France, sort of outside the small area plan boundaries. Likewise, the same thing for Fiftieth and France. So that's something I think the city is up on.
Thank you very much, Bill. That was a very good answer. Thank you.
So, what do I, what? What'd you say?
Is it time for commission comments?
Yeah, sorry. So do we want to, yeah, just open up for comments? Feel free to, you know, do your elevator speech on what you.
Well, I would like to comment or respond to the request to have the five-minute, you know, what's this all about? What are the changes? How will that affect Edina? I think that was a really good question. Maybe in hindsight, we should have opened with that. We probably didn't think of it, because there's still a piece that will come from the city council. So if this gets approved and goes down the path, what you'll see in addition to this is what you might think of as kind of an executive summary or cover letter that's going to come from the city council, the mayor and the city council. And it will be a very high-level overview, and will address exactly what you're commenting on. I might just spend a minute and give you my opinion. You asked, what are the changes? Why are the changes? And how do you think it will affect the residents of Edina? So as you saw on the graphic where we had the TAS, the Traffic Area Zones, there are 36 zones? 44 zones. And there are 36 that won't be changed, there are eight that will be changed. So really, the change is in those eight zones that were colored red. Primarily, those are what we've been referring to as nodes, and many of those were what were studied in what we're calling the Small Area Plans, which are chapters in the comprehensive plan. So that's the real change that you'll see, if anything. What we really want to do is have the change there, the primary change, because we want to protect the neighborhoods, we want to protect the parks, we want to protect the great schools. And those are the things that, you know, are 90% of where the population lives, are those other TAS zones. The second thing is why we're doing the changes. So if we have greater density and focus our change and upgrades in those nodes, then for those nodes, we can provide greater transportation and connectivity between the zones, we'll have greater commerce within those zones, and we'll have more housing options. So there'll also be, with that, a lot more vitality. And again, that's not going to affect, in general, the neighborhoods. It's only those nodes. And then the third one, I guess that dovetails into how we would expect it might affect residents of Edina. So if you're in your neighborhood, it probably won't affect you much at all unless you're looking for greater transportation options. Or perhaps you want to downsize and you need more housing options, or you want more commerce, then you can go to those nodes and find those things there. But it probably won't affect you much in your particular neighborhood. We would expect, though, that with some of these zones having greater density, you know, we should get some upgrade in the infrastructure, because that's part of what the Met Council is planning on. So not only transportation infrastructure, but sewer and other types of infrastructure. So that's my opinion. You'll get the official cover letter from the city council, and I don't know if other people want to spend their five minutes on those three topics, but.
Just go down the line. So, yeah, I think Sheila covered it well. I would say one thing we didn't note was the amount of effort relative to this whole project that went into different components, and about 70% went into the small area plan. So early on, through the vision process and through the big ideas workshop, you know, all of us spoke up, you know, we don't want to change our neighborhoods. That's what's so nice about Edina, our education system, as well as the feel people have in their neighborhood. So it was decided early on that a lot of the focus would go to those areas of potential change. So instead of just doing everything at once, we divided and conquered and focused on the small area plans, so Forty Fourth and France, Fiftieth and France, Seventieth and Cahill. So that's where most of the effort over the last three years went. Thus, most of the change. Thus, most of the change that you see in this huge document is actually in the small area plans. We want to protect what we love about Edina and our neighborhoods, but we also recognize that there is a chance to enhance some of the things that we do like collectively, and that's these nodes. We're lucky to have more than just one node. We don't just have like a downtown Edina like some small towns. We have several nodes because of the streetcar system back in the day, and those places are special to us in different ways. Sheila and I participated in and helped facilitate the 44th and France Small Area Plan. That's something close to our heart. So that whole project wasn't really about, you know, that final document. It was about the process to get there, and it was a community-led process. So nothing that's in this comprehensive plan is meant to be like, you know, a sudden surprise to anyone, or we're hiding something. It's been stuff that's, you know, we've been enlightened upon through the process of the last... Well, I didn't push that button. The last couple of years.
Three minutes.
Yeah, my three minutes are up. So for us, it's these small area, small areas where we have the chance to enhance what we want to see change in our neighborhoods is the place that we go toward to gather as a community or to do commerce. We want it more walkable. We want it safer. We want better transportation options. We want an ability for people who work in our community to live here as well. And those small areas are the perfect, you know, this whole plan is improved, but those are the perfect areas to do it versus, hey, let's rezone our neighborhoods to allow more housing choices. That's not what we wanted to do. And so a lot of the changes are in those small areas, and that's where you'll see construction. That's where we all realize there's going to be change. And to one comment, if we did nothing, that is really letting the developers decide what changes will happen in our community. So we wanted to be proactive and together create these small area plans that accommodate change, but also help dictate terms on that change. What we want to see and what we're willing to be uncomfortable with the change, but we're certain to get in return. So that's my elevator speech on what changes you'll see. It's really the small areas. Thanks.
I'm it. I think the, I was on the Southdale District Plan Planning Group, and I think that's the area that you'll see them. It's the biggest node, and you'll see the biggest change. It's 790 acres that in large part is stockpiled land waiting to change. Most of that land was developed beginning in 1956 with Southdale and finished in the mid-'70s. It's outdated. We don't use offices the same way. We don't want from our office buildings what we used to want. We want something entirely different. They work differently. They went from a, perhaps a B-plus office, to most of them C and C-minus. They went from full occupancy to many with large vacancies. You can see the changes coming, just as you can see the changes coming in retail. We have to be ahead of that. We have to plan on that. 790 acres is twice the size of downtown Minneapolis. And it's going to go back to either a cornfield or something a lot more interesting. And I think a great deal of time, effort, and enormous talent from our consultant team went into looking at what Southdale can become. I think it's something we'll all be proud of. I think it will support our property tax base in a way that cornfields can't. I think it has an opportunity to be very futuristic and very planful. So I look forward to that.
Thanks, John. You know, so I want to start with following on John's comments. I, too, was on the Southdale District Task Force or Working Group. And I think saying that, saying that Southdale's where the bulk of the change is going to occur is probably understating that. And I would, I would, I would say, I would come to this exact conclusion John came to. I'd say it a little differently, though. I would say that Southdale is in the process of transitioning from a retail district to a community, and that's where a lot of the growth is going to come, just from, because retail is just changing. I think back to the history of Southdale, even kind of the present time. I don't know how many acres are just furniture stores or parking lots for furniture stores. And from what I can tell, my generation, the generation coming up behind me, just doesn't buy furniture like that anymore. And so that land is not being used. And that's just one small example of how Southdale's changing. And what we're, so we're identifying what are the possible future areas where we can replenish that tax base for the city of Edina, get a vibrant community that people enjoy, that will also bring in the other kinds of stores, services, and experiences that people in the 21st century like. I mean, the Southdale District was an awesome district, but I can think back historically to even, you know, 1992 or so, and the Mall of America opened, and the general thought was, well, that's not going to affect us. And it did. And, and we're, and the pace of change for that kind of model of an area is increasing rapidly. I just, I don't know if I go, if I look around the country, or if even I see successful retail districts today that are specifically focused on people driving to a retail district. I think of like the Kirland area in Scottsdale, which is taking over the shopping area in Scottsdale. That was built as a community, not as a series of drive-to stores. And, and then it has restaurants that people enjoy, and other experiences are coming around that. That's probably, that's really going to be a lot of change over the next 10, 20 years as located to Southdale. Bruce, your question is just spot-on. I mean, it's just, it's just, you know, I'm not going to say what, you know, I know exactly where you're coming from with that. And being able to picture in just a couple of minutes what the changes are. I suspect that for most people, to echo Sheila and Jimmy, and I think many of us, most people aren't going to experience significant change here if you're living in your house. Now, if you're living in a house today and you think you want to stay in Edina, but you don't want to stay in your house, this plan may accommodate other options for you to sell your house and remain in the community. So that person, that may be the change you see, that maybe more options available to you to stay in your house. I thought Ms. Bromer really identified a lot of the summary of the plan, which I will repeat here. You know, it's some of the, I think she identified five areas of change in this comp plan, and I think those are really good. I mean, it's a greater, compared to the 2008 plan, nothing wrong with the 2008 plan, this idea, but this plan reflects a greater understanding that people today have of our effect on the environment and how actions we do, how we live, how we travel affects the environment. And that's not a criticism of the 2008 plan. It's just something that everyone talks about more, not just in Edina. I mean, that's national news. What are we doing, and how does that affect our environment? This plan talks about it a lot more. Oh, boy, terrible handwriting. The variety of, number two, there was a variety of... Do you have better handwriting than I do, John? You have beautiful handwriting. Variety of transportation. The variety, yes. Multimodal transportation. This plan really, this is something that's been growing in Edina for several years. The idea of, we created, Living Streets was created a few years ago. We've been doing bike plans. There's an increased look at bus transit. I agree with the commenter, there isn't as much talk on Southwest LRT. I would say as an aside, that's because that, there's a few reasons for that. One is Southdale's LRT isn't as ready, and two, that might require a greater community discussion about... Trains are just a big issue in, when they go into communities, and they require a greater community discussion. But generally, this comp plan is accommodative and anticipatory of much more, a much greater variety of transportation. I agree that this plan also consider, is giving a little more forward thought about how do we protect and enhance parks. The Southdale District Small Area Plan in particular gets a lot of credit for it. Not only Dan Cornell, he identified himself tonight as the person that did the public service, fire, police, schools. But Dan was also one of the two leaders of the Southdale Area Plan. And there was a lot of thought in Southdale about how we can, in the Southdale District, how we can increase parks for the, for the community there, and the amount of distance between a house and a community. One thought that's in that plan is, is there a need to have something like a Centennial Lakes Park on the north end of the Southdale District for people that live there in the future? So that is a third area of change recognized by this plan. The fourth, as I mentioned, that Ms. Bromer identified, the fourth is the increased tax base. And it's, and it's not just an increased tax base, it's a changing tax base. The retail district, the office buildings that are decreasing in value are not going to provide the same tax base to support the services that we in Edina have become accustomed to. A community like that is, that's being considered in Southdale is what we consider today to be the best, or the most likely path to develop an increased tax base to continue to support the schools and the other parts of the public service lifestyle that we've come to enjoy in Edina with great snow plowing and leading schools. And then fifth, I agree with Ms. Bromer about just the increased recognition of where we live versus our, versus our fellow citizens in terms of affordable housing in the community. And we are seeing that that is becoming an urgency. Personally, I think that's a really hard thing for a community to change. I think there's a lot of national, international economic factors that are driving this, that are causing affordable housing issues. But we're going to, we're trying to do what we can to make some impact on that. So those are the changes. I wanted to comment on a couple other things. I'm sorry that, if I'm going over time. The one thing that's been mentioned a few times, and it even was mentioned on the podium tonight, is that the housing chapter is not complete. And I take exception to that, and I disagree with that statement. I think the housing chapter is excellent. Do I think that there's additional detail that needs to be done, additional community discussion on housing and land use? Absolutely. And I think that should be done, and I suspect that many of my colleagues up here agree, by a group of people that are focused on that, that have expertise on that. We've been doing, over the last three years, a very broad look at, at a wide range of factors in Edina beyond housing and land use. We've been looking at public services, we've been looking at parks, we've been looking at transportation. And for us to have either held the comprehensive plan till we answered every question about housing, or for us to have dived into housing, would either have done a disservice to either the comprehensive plan or to the solution for housing. By inviting it, by forming a task force with people that have expertise and interest and focus on that issue, Edina will be much better off. The comprehensive plan tees up the issues very nicely. And so I just have to disagree that the comprehensive plan is incomplete as to housing. I think it's actually quite good. The other thing I do want to comment on is, is just the idea of change in and of itself. I've, I've been involved in the Southdale Plan. I've been, I was a co-chair with John of the 50th and France. I've been very involved in the CDV Dyna Comprehensive Plan. One of the biggest scary thing, the most scary things to me is recognizing my limitation on projecting the future, of what I wouldn't want to have in the future, what I would want to have in the future. You know, I think of many predictions by experts in history, like when Franz Ferdinand was killed, when the leading foreign affairs columnist said, oh, good, I mean, it's too bad for the Franz Ferdinand family, but that'll, that'll lower the tension over there. And, you know, everybody's familiar with the chairman or the CEO of IBM saying that there's only going to be really a desire for five computers in the world. And these are people with expertise beyond what I have in terms of seeing the plan. So when I'm doing this, I get very hesitant to say, well, we aren't going, we're going to do this in 10 years, or we're not going to do that in 10 years. I'm going to be off the planning commission long before the next 10 years is over. The city council is likely to turn over significantly long before the next 10 years are over. Desires, people's desires about what they want out of the community are likely to change a lot in the next 10 years, even if you don't think they are. And I'm, I'm very concerned about the idea of, hey, you're not stopping that, or you're, or some people really say, I really want that to happen. Make it happen. And I, I'm hesitant in the comprehensive plan to go to those extremes where we stop things or we require things. And I think that it causes people on both ends of the, on both sides to be dissatisfied. But I think, just like a good negotiation, that shows you kind of struck a good balance in where you're going down the middle, and I feel like we did that. So that concludes my comments. I thank you for listening to me. I hope I, I hope we're all concluding at the same time here, but thank you.
So I think it was mentioned before about Southdale becoming more of a community center instead of retail or primarily commerce. And I think that's highly representative of our increasingly globalized world and connected world, whether it be by technology or transportation. We're increasingly reliant on our community to grow, and I think that's exactly what we're going towards with the Greater Southdale Plan as well as the comp plan. I think I'm really excited to see where this goes and the effects of it. I think it'll be really great for our future community, so, yeah.
Yes, I don't want to be repetitive. I believe our, my fellow commissioners have stated, you know, our case here. I liked, that was, that was a very provocative opening, challenge, what, you know, what changes were proposed, why, and to what effect. That was a very, very stimulating question. And I think Commissioner Ruby very much had it right at the beginning, you know, on the hand. The one in the, John, with your opening, you and Todd, I think there's a key takeaway. This 93% of the city is unaffected, unchanged, and, you know, only 7%. And I'm assuming what we're saying is that it's these areas of interest which drove the need to study the small area plans, and the Greater Southdale District representing probably the largest chunk of that. And I think that's the message that needs to be presented. And particularly in this, what is it, 100 and almost 20 submittals? I think those questions in this, the submittal, they have been addressed, and I think the, it's that anxiousness of what they think or what they think is happening versus what's real. And I think that's, that's our, that's been our task here, is to get truth out there. And I think the plan is a wonderful document. Thank you.
Wow, it's been really upbeat, so I'm going to go a different direction. The way I look at it is, have, has this been a successful plan? If 20 years, we can look back and see everything that's happened under this plan and not have regrets. And I think when you deal with real estate, with property, it's permanent. I mean, we're now kind of repurposing some buildings that were built in the '50s and '60s. But you think about the decisions that get made and how things get allocated, it's passed my, into my lifetime. And I don't want to be 20 years from now looking at projects and say, well, you know, we maybe would have put some better guidelines in place and really thought about it, we could have gotten something better than a strip mall. And I think we've been blessed in Edina that we haven't seen that, that we haven't seen the influx of strip malls, because we've been able to hold developers and redevelopment to a, to a high standard. But it's out there, and I, and to me, that's what scares me. The minute you start making it, we're not going to accept any redevelopment, we're not going to accept any growth, you're defaulting to our 1960s zoning code in Edina, and we will be taken over by strip malls. And I can look at a number of projects that, in air small area plans, that have been highly contentious. And just knowing that if we are just left to the market and to the, the full rights of those property owners, we would be left with something that we would not be happy with. And that unknown is what, I guess, haunts me, that I just don't want to see that happen on my, my watch, that to see these just charming, sometimes, under, you know, some areas that are in need of some more love to be turned over into just, you know, suburban sprawl. And I would, I would hate to see that on my watch. We've had one of them happen so far. I have to drive past it every day, and it irritates me to no end. But that is why, you know, I'm involved and why I'm passionate about it. So, thank you. why, you know, I'm involved, and why I'm passionate about it. So, thank you.
I want to thank Commissioner Barubi for taking the dive on the front end. So I agree with everything that's been said previous to me. I did, I don't want to, in some ways, minimize the feedback that we did receive from several hundred residents, and characterize that, or lump them together, as people who are resistant to change or don't want change. I think we have a highly populated education, educated resident population here. So there's always, to me, there's always some basis for looking at all viewpoints. I try not to make a judgment of where that's coming from, but obviously you know that people all come from different places. I think what, one thing that, and we've mentioned this already, that could use a little more vetting is truly the population projections. We have, I think, so far increased that number two times, just during the duration of the different drafts coming forward. And those numbers do rise as a result of the input from our city, going back to Met Council. So I want to clear up any misconception that somehow Met Council is driving that. Met Council gave us some initial projections. And it's basically saying, we, based on our population studies, see that you will need to accommodate at least this many in the coming decade. We have, as you know, gone through a lot of development recently, and I think added almost close to 2,000 additional units, which translate directly into new households. So there can be some direct correlation between that to raise the so-called population projection. But I also agree with residents that, as a resident of Edina, you have a say in whether you want that type of growth. People move here for a reason, and I don't think it should necessarily always be driven by development per se. So I think the plan lays a good foundation for how we do address that development, should it come forth in the next 10 years. But I do think that there probably is some need to have an additional discussion and vetting process with residents about how much growth do we really want. Cities can have that say. Met Council did not take that away from us. So I think that I'm glad to hear that this Housing Task Force will specifically look at that. And I might say that if we are going to sort of look at this plan with a recommendation to the council to approve it, that we add a recommendation step that says that we allow the population and household forecast to be studied within that Housing Task Force. And any provisions that are incorporated in the Edina, within the Comp Plan update, shall be reflective of the outcome of that as a future Comp Plan amendment. So it gives us an opportunity to really finesse and land on a number that residents, as well as the task force, are comfortable with in terms of population and households. I might even go so far to suggest that maybe we recommend that the city actually just do a quick query or survey of the residents, and say where we are now in terms of our population projection. Obviously, that has to incorporate the development we've already undertaken. So how much more would residents be able to, in their estimation in the coming 10 years, accept? And just get a feel, to make sure that we're in the right, right zone, the right area, and reflecting on that. And again, it's not a goal, it's not a target, but certainly can have the input of the residents. And we may never hit it. We may never hit any of these, so in which case it becomes a moot point. But I think that the input from the residents is paramount, and we have to have that discussion, and it needs to be incorporated. So that's, that's what I'd like to see.
So it's hard to add much to what my fellow commissioners have said, but let me just make a few small comments. One is that, I guess one reason there's not a huge introduction is that this was, we were tasked from the beginning with making this an update to the 2008 Plan. So as was said before, the small area plans are the major areas of change. And other than that, it's really just updates. A lot of it's technical stuff that I think most residents really don't care about. But then, anything that was new, I think we were looking at things through a lens of sustainability, equity, and energy use. And that applies everything from land use to transportation. And when I say land use and transportation, that includes things like transit, and multimodal transit, and parking, density, livability. There's a lot of things that we tried to incorporate into all chapters. And I think the commissions that had input on each chapter did a wonderful job of really emphasizing the things that were important to them. So I think the goal here was to have a plan that, and actually, at the last minute, you know, last fall, although we were planning for sustainability and equity and such, the whole idea of climate change and the impetus that that has had with the UN report and the US report, kind of, you know, put a change on things at the very end. And I think this means that this plan, while we're approving it, well, we will be approving it this year, I think we have a lot of work to do ahead of us, because climate change really is impacting not only the world, but yes, even Edina too. So land use and transportation especially are things that I think we'll have to look at over the coming years. So, anyway, that's it.
Again, I don't want to repeat everything, because I, it's just, I think, everyone said everything I wanted to say. But actually, you nailed it, Ms. Bromer, when you, you know, the five statements you made, I was like, yep, that's right there, you know, we're done. I think you should, you should, you should start writing that letter for the introduction. We'll be in touch with you. But that just reflected exactly what I see with this Comp Plan. And again, all the small area plans, and it's been really hard, because there's been a lot of development pressure, and we've seen a lot of development applications, and we were just always kind of like winging it. You know, not completely winging it, but you know, really, we needed some guidance. And now we've got that. And it's really, I'm excited, because those small area plans have really come up with unique, you know, ideas and goals for each of those areas. And it's really going to take us in a good direction. And, you know, transportation, and housing, and the whole climate thing, too. I mean, it was all sustainability. So we're really looking at just creative, you know, ways to accommodate this change. So, anyway, everyone said all that, and I'm just really excited. And I think it's a good, good plan. And that's what I want to see. So, is there a motion?
I'll move the Comprehensive Plan Amendment forward with a recommendation to the City Council.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to add the, just a recommendation to that, it's not exactly an amendment, regarding the further study of the population and household forecasts as part of the Housing Task Force.
Did you, do you accept that?
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Of course, we can vote on it, it could be an unfounded amendment.
Well, I know Jimmy had a comment, too. We need to make--
I just wanted to clarify, we do have some changes they're looking into in the meantime. So are those noted as part of your--
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm concerned about the amendment. I, for one thing, it's a big change, and I'd like more than five minutes to think about that kind of change. I don't know the scope of the study, I don't know the outcome of the study, but it feels like I'm being asked at this point to give my proxy to whatever that outcome is, without reviewing it. I'm also wondering about unforeseen effects. Like if we say, well, that group says that the population is to be 60,000, and then someone has a baby, do we have to amend the Comp Plan, when, if that baby is the 60,000 and first citizen of Edina, and get Met Council approval? Or do they have to move from the city, or does someone, I mean, I just like to think through that a little bit more. Maybe when the study is done, I'd be open to looking at it and thinking whether we should add it at that time.
All right, so--
It's just a recommendation, it's not an amendment. And those numbers, obviously, would come out of the task force. It's not, I don't think anybody gets to like, just pick the number. Again, the numbers we have right now, they're in the same category. They're based on someone's judgment. So if anything, we're adding a little more data to it, I think that's, that's a good thing. And of course, it's just a recommendation to council. We're just advisory.
So, just to clarify, it does seem to me that when we're studying, or a team is studying in-depth the housing, it's hard to go forward with that without having some sense of population. So can you just clarify what you would be expecting? Because this team will be looking at forecasted population. So what would you want in addition to that?
That any data that comes out of that to justify the population figures that are currently in the report could actually still be modified based on what they find.
But how, because, because it's a forecast and not a mandate, we're not going to control the population one way or the other. So does it, does that data matter, aside from just planning for housing? Because we're not going to know until it's over.
Great. I think right now, the--
I think we have, I don't know, we have a, we can go back and forth and back and forth, but we had--
I just wanted to be clear on what, what the amendment is. I mean, I mean, what the study would be.
Yeah, the study, I, obviously, that's still in the council's hands, and they're gonna, you know, they don't know yet, because the proposal has to be proposed by the city manager. So, I can't answer that question, I guess.
So we had a motion and a second, a suggested amendment to the motion, which was, yep, was not accepted. So we have the motion and second to approve it with any of those other edits. Yep. So all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, great, thank you. And so Carrie, again, when does this go in front of the council?
This goes to the City Council on May 7.
May 7, okay. And it's another public hearing?
It is a public hearing.
Okay. All right, so next we have a site plan review at 7725 Washington Avenue, self-storage facility.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. We have a rare application in front of you this evening, in that this is completely code compliant. Everything meets our city code requirement. So what's before the Planning Commission is just a simple site plan review. So the property is located at 7725 Washington Avenue. It's down in the southwest corner of the city, right on the border of Eden Prairie, so north of 494 on Washington Avenue. Property is zone-planned industrial district in the yellow area. So the building today is about a little over 57,000 square feet. It's office, light industrial type uses. The proposal here is to expand that building to about 113,000 square feet. And again, it would be used for mini storage. So again, this is code compliant, meets all of our setback requirements, height requirements, floor area ratio goes right to the max, but is code compliant, meets our building coverage, minimum lot size, parking stalls, and drive aisles. So the addition would come to the front of the building, in the shaded area. The way this would operate is users would pull into this addition here, and then they would bring their items to the storage. So all the storage and activities take place inside the building. Once they're done, they would simply drive out and then move off the site on Washington Avenue. Customer access would be available between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM daily. Office hours would be Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 6:00 PM, and Saturday from 9:00 to 5:30. Again, this is a permitted use within the zoning district. We did a quick look at the traffic generated, and this is actually much less of a traffic generator than would be in office use or light industrial use. So no traffic study was done. Rather, we just know the numbers here that's generated are less than previous uses that exist on the site. Based on the square footage of the building, 56 parking stalls are required. They've demonstrated a site plan that shows 56. They probably don't need 56. And if they needed more, there's plenty of room to add it on the site. The landscaping is code compliant. They need, based on the perimeter, 45 trees around the perimeter. The combination of existing and proposed, they would have 47. Building materials, proposed, it's a brick building, they're going to paint it white, and then the addition will be a material to match that brick in the same color. They do have a materials board, and they will present that to you as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this-- oh, one thing I want to mention. So this is our bike and pedestrian plan, recently approved, and this is part of the comprehensive plan, but has already been approved previously. There is a sidewalk called for on Washington Avenue on the east side. Currently, there's no sidewalk. There is a sidewalk on the west side, but we're wanting one on the east side. So it may be odd for a while, we're requiring that that sidewalk be installed now. It will be a sidewalk to nowhere, but we need to start at some point. So that is a condition of approval, and the applicant is agreeable to that. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant is here to present as well.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Go for it.
According to city code, outdoor storage is not permitted at this facility.
Outdoor storage would not be correct.
Yes, seriously, when have we ever seen a plan that didn't have a variance listed in there?
I can't, we've done, we've done a few, it's been a while.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Carrie. Or did you have a question?
I have a quick question, if I could, Carrie. There's a ton of paving on the site that seems superfluous. And it would be a demolition contract with no purpose that serves the building to remove it, other than it's the right thing to do. We need to perk the ground, we don't need to heat the air, we don't need, in a sustainable universe, leaving it there is a bad thing. Is there any way that we can request that they reduce the paving to the amount needed, instead of the amount that they happen to have?
Yeah, we can ask them, being that they're not, I don't know if we can require them to do that--
I appreciate that we can, but I would like us to require that, to request that.
This may be a question as much for the applicant as it is for you, Carrie, but what's the external appearance of it? You know, sometimes we get these type of facilities, and it's a chain link fence, and sometimes it's something a little nicer than that, and is that--
The building, it's, and again, they have a materials board, but it's a brick building now, they're going to be painting it white. And then the addition is a material that would match that. So it would have the appearance of a painted white brick building.
Okay, so it's not going to be like a lot of fences?
Right. Yeah, no fence that I'm, you know, this is all interior storage, so it's not your, oh, we, like, like Commissioner Thorson mentioned, we don't allow outside storage.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
So would the applicant like to speak? Nope, that just, nope, you're good, you just--
Oh, good evening, Planning Commission Chair, members, Greg Hayes, Eber Construction, E and R Investments is our development entity, and-- He and our investments is our development entity, and we are acquiring and developing, and will be owning the facility. And it'll be a Class A facility. You saw in the application packet, there was something, information about the type of customer, and type of use, and light and bright, and I think that's something that Edina doesn't have right now, so it'll be a nice addition for a lot of residents. We've developed a number of these facilities around the Twin Cities, Eden Prairie, Maple Grove, have one going in Eagan right now, Brooklyn Center, Coon Rapids, Plymouth, so they're well-received and well-respected. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Can you respond to Commissioner Hamilton's request about the impervious coverage, or?
Part of the impervious coverage is for fire access. We have to maintain fire access on both sides of the building. We've had conversation with the fire marshal on that, and he needs full access down the side to turn around. After approval for the site plan, we are required to go back to the Nine Mile Creek and create an infiltration plan for the site, so it will reduce some of the hardcover on that, and we've met with Nine Mile Creek, but we don't do that until after there's already approval, and then they tell us. But, right now, we will be doing some infiltration on-site and stuff, and reducing.
Any other questions, or the applicant?
It appears that you have a 26-foot wide parking lot on the, help me out here, south side of the building. And if that's adequate for the fire department, then perhaps a 26-foot wide drive lane on the north side of the building would be adequate. And you're not showing 26, you're showing more like 80.
Yeah, um, as Mr. Teague said, we're complying with the ordinance. We don't want to plow any more snow than we have to. Our intent is to maintain fire access and turn around for the fire trucks and stuff, and we also have to accommodate the parking and access for the entrance and exiting for the drive-in, unloading bay and swing.
So I was looking at your seven reasons why people use self-storage units, and it's been many years since I used one, but I imagine a lot of people will use, you know, especially people who are moving would, you know, use a truck and have all the contents, you know, in and out at one, one shot. But you give other examples, like a safe place for equipment, storing business inventory or archives, I suggest there may be cases where people use a smaller vehicle to, you know, a small truck or something to, to bring stuff in and out. And lately, we've been seeing a, and I imagine, not having ever owned one of these businesses, but that the, the, your customer base would be presumably within a few miles of, of the location. So I'm just wondering, with the advent of cargo bikes and e-cargo bikes, where people are actually moving relatively large amounts of, of stuff with, with bicycles and e-bikes, has any thought been put into having something that would be easier to access from an e-bike than from a cargo bike or something, loading or unloading or anything like that?
Do you mean different than the interior drive-up, loading, unloading bay?
Right, right.
Well, ordinance requires all loading, unloading is done interior to the building, so they all come in through the loading, unloading bay. I don't know if we can pull up the exterior image. It has two drive-in doors, and then two exiting doors. It's large enough to accommodate a large truck and a vehicle at the same time. So, I believe that is 50 feet long. It's 50 feet long, and the width is 40 feet, I believe, wide. So, that's a large space. It can accommodate easily four vehicles. Typical self-storage facility will usually have three or four cars on-site at a time, not very much, very low traffic, low impact, so yeah, it can accommodate different types of uses that way.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, but I, you don't have a comment for the applicant, okay. Okay, okay. You're good, you can sit down. Alright, so this is a public hearing, is anyone from the public would like to speak? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Alright, bringing it back to the planning commission, are there any other comments, questions, motions?
Is there any restrictions against high school chemistry teachers? No, no. No need.
No, forget it, strike that from the record.
I'm gonna go ahead and just move approval of the site plan review.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, next on the agenda is a conditional use permit for Restoration Hardware, 6801 France Avenue South.
Okay. Restoration Hardware is proposing rooftop dining at the building under construction at 6801 France Avenue. The subject property is 2.09 acres and is located within the Southdale Center site. It was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council in 2017, and the project was, since then, the project had been administratively approved after the Planning Commission and City Council approval, due to the fact that the project changed from four stories down to three stories in height. Rooftop restaurants are conditional use in the planned commercial district, which the site is zoned, and therefore the applicant, the applicant is required to obtain a conditional use permit. There would be no change in access or traffic to the site with the addition of the rooftop dining. No additional traffic or parking needs would be generated with the approval of the rooftop dining, due to the fact that a restaurant was always planned for the site, within the existing building, when it came through Planning Commission and City Council the first time. There's no changes to the building materials that will be made, and the third floor here has, shows the, the outline of what the applicant is proposing on that rooftop, and that will be, they will have a wine, pantry and wine bar, kitchen area, an outdoor terrace, and a cafe. Like I said, there will be no changes to the proposed building materials, since the Planning Commission had seen, Planning Commission and City Council had approved the original site plan. And as, tonight staff believes that the criteria for conditional use permit are met, the applicant is proposing limited hours of operation that fit within the required hours of operation for a conditional use permit. The applicant has noted that they will comply with the city's noise ordinance, and they will keep the rooftop dining area clean and orderly, and it will be screened adequately from residential uses surrounding the area. A liquor license will be required for that outdoor dining area, and fencing will be required per Minnesota State Building Code. Lighting will also be permitted on-site, and will only illuminate the designated rooftop area. Tonight, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for rooftop dining at Restoration Hardware at 6801 France Avenue South, subject to the conditions and findings listed in the staff report. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
So, the restaurant is the same size as what was originally approved?
Yes, believe so.
Believe so, or?
Yes, Carrie.
It is, okay, thanks. How many other questions? Go for it.
Emily, this is essentially the same, we're being asked the same kind of approval as what the Lifetime Fitness-
Correct.
Did, also, right?
Yep.
I mean, that's essentially the same.
Yep, this building is currently under construction, similar to where Lifetime was at when the conditional use permit came forward to the Planning Commission. And so, the rooftop dining is the portion that needs the conditional use permit, the building is under construction.
And they're, 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 they're being asked to comply with all the same-
Correct.
Requirements and expectations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Emily, is the applicant here?
Yes, believe so. Good evening, I am from Restoration Hardware, so I have your questions that you may have, but we believe that the application meets all the requirements for approval, and we are here to ask you to approve it, and think it's going to be a great addition to the building that's already under construction.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
So, just a general question, so I'm just looking at the plan, is, is this space just all retail? It's going to be all 100% Restoration Hardware, and you're just doing little, little sets and-
Yes.
Showrooms and-
Yeah, it's, there's a couple other locations nationwide that have the same, same type of model. I don't know if you're familiar with this store in Chicago. They opened up one in West Palm Beach, that this rooftop concept is actually being modeled after, because it was so successful. But yes, it'll be all retail, and the idea is to drive people up the floors to the rooftop cafe, and so that there's, they're seeing all the furniture that there is being offered.
And then the cafe is going to be run on-site by Restoration Hardware, that is your own-
Yes.
Restaurant?
Yeah.
So I, I guess the, the covered part is year-round, and the terraces are when the weather permitting, kind of thing?
Yes, correct, when we have, when we have our nice weather here in the summer.
Is there ever a chance that, that some of these spaces can be rented out for private parties?
That I don't know. It's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful building, looks great.
Couple comments. Thanks for sticking around, geez. That's the first one. And second, just out of curiosity, does the one in West Palm Beach, does it have its own identity? You know, like the bar, does it have a name? Or do people just know to go to Restoration Hardware? I'm just curious for wayfinding in the future.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know if it has its own identity or not. I know, I know the one in Chicago is just Restoration Hardware. I think they do brand, have a name, brand for the cafes, but I'm not sure what it'll be.
Okay, just curious, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, bringing it back to the planning commission, any other comments? Oh, public hearing, sorry, I'm sorry. Gosh, you're sitting there all the time and never being able to speak to.
Good evening, is this mic on? Can everyone hear me? Good evening, everyone, it's been a long night, but always interesting. It was good to hear about the comp plan. I sat through many meetings and appreciated all the hard work of everyone. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. I've had an opportunity to review the information sent by the planning department, I appreciated what they sent, about the conditional use permit. I love that the building is only three stories high, it's very, it's an attractive building, and very respectful to the neighborhood. It doesn't loom over us, and for that, I am very grateful. And it's my understanding that they will be abiding by the lighting codes and the hours, which again, is much appreciated. What I'm not seeing, however, are plans for cooking order control, and that is an important issue in my neighborhood. The odors, the odors from various restaurants seep into our neighborhood, everything from garlic in the early morning hours, to the odor of fried foods at various times of the day. It's difficult to enjoy the outdoors when you're surrounded by offensive odors. Last Friday was a beautiful day, and after dinner, I decided to read outside. I quickly changed my mind, however, the odor of fried foods was just too much, I went back inside. And as we all know, the Southdale Work Group spent a tremendous amount of time on that plan. Their goal was to create a walkable, livable community, while adding additional housing, businesses and eating establishments. As part of that design, residents are encouraged to walk, bike and enjoy the outdoors. But the fresh air we all crave is often replaced by offensive odors, and as our community continues to grow, this will become a larger issue. This evening, I'm asking you, as members of the Planning Commission, to take a lead role in making sure neighborhoods are protected from undesirable odors. Other communities have crafted ordinances to protect neighborhoods, so can Edina. Planning is where it all begins. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public like to speak?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Now I'll bring it back up to the planning commission. Carrie, just in response to that, do you, do we have anything, or, sorry, Emily?
Um, the health department responded, and that they responded, the fire department requires that the hood and ductwork installed in restaurants be cleaned according to certain standards and criteria that the fire department has, but they don't test for levels of odor.
Comments? Jimmy, or?
So, one thing that strikes me on that, is that's not necessarily, that's, that's a good issue, Nora, thank you for bringing that up. I, I, you know, I don't have an answer for you off the top of my head. It does strike me, I have two thoughts regarding that. One is, that's not necessarily an outdoor seating issue, that's just a restaurant in general issue, obviously, the, the odors that are experienced are coming from indoor restaurants, and maybe that's something that could be considered, you know, maybe that's a, a, a kind of a, an issue that Carrie or someone could be looking at, is there, are there, are there ordinances we should put into about odor control? It's at least worth looking into, I, it'd be my take. I don't know if that's, it seems to be somewhat of a adjacent, but different issue than the conditional use permit for this. The one thing I would say for this conditional use permit, I mean, not, not, I think the odor is a real issue, I totally understand that. But generally, I think when we thought of the outdoor dining, when we passed the ordinance, this was almost like a textbook case, something that's fairly distant from any residences. So, I, I, and it's, it's, it's going to be attractive, I've seen businesses like this that are, that are not in the food business, but they have kind of their retail store with a restaurant on top, and they're really nice. I mean, businesses that I would never go into, but they're attractive, that restaurant makes it attractive and a nice part of the community, so I, I think this is a really nice idea.
Yeah, just wanted to comment, thinking about that, I mean, that, that's definitely a real issue, and, you know, it's not something we enforce or have codes or anything around, so it's difficult to, you know, make a decision based off of that. But, you know, it kind of reminds me of, you know, the same issues we encounter with the, the sound, and how there's always going to be this tension between, you know, like, you want some sound, because that means there's bustling activity and energy, and it's usually in a node, where you want restaurants or businesses that add to the flavor of your community. So, it'd be nice to see what other communities do to mitigate it, or have protections in place if they do, and if it's realistic, just in the future for us to make informed decisions on in the future. But, for right now, I mean, I think the issue at hand, you know, this is separate, but it's interesting to think about, and I think there's always that tension, because you want something like this. Everyone wants something like this in, near their neighborhood, so.
Yeah, so, so that could be something that we add to our work plan, some of those ordinance reviews. In my experience, you know, in the last 10 years or so, the only complaint that I'm aware of, where we've got a, we've had a complaint from residents with restaurant odors, is the McCormick and Schmick, the, some of the- Some of the odors were rising up to the condos above. And they brought it to the attention of the restaurant, and they worked it out. They did something, something to their exhaust system. So I know instant... That's the one instance where I know we've got a complaint, and the restaurant was willing to try to make some improvements. But I haven't heard anything at 50th and France, some of those other commercial mixed-use areas.
May I make a comment? I can't. If I come up, can I make a comment?
Closed, sorry.
Well, obviously, technology can accommodate that. So there are ways to mitigate odors. That's a great example. We're putting housing directly above restaurants. So yeah, Carrie, I think that'd be a great thing to add. You know, see, just investigate a little bit and see what other communities have done. Probably Minneapolis, that's all you need to look at. They're the hotbed of that. Restaurant everywhere on the ground floor. And then we could make some decision whether there's actually some type of tweak to the ordinance. But with Southdale coming up and with the number of restaurants that could potentially blossom in there and we're trying to bring housing, probably will become an issue that we'll have to revisit sooner or later.
Any other comments or motion or...
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit.
There is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, the last public hearing is a variance request at 5812 Hanson Road.
A 4.25-foot front yard setback variance to build a foyer addition to the front of the existing home at 5812 Hanson Road. The property is approximately 13,000 square feet in area and is located on the west side of Hanson Road, north of Benton Avenue. And the applicant is proposing that the single... existing single-family home will remain. The city's ordinance requires the average of the two adjacent homes or the average of the block as the required front yard setback, which for the subject property is 36.7 feet. The proposed foyer extends 4.25 feet into the required setback, but the remainder of the applicant's proposed project conforms to all other zoning requirements. 5812 Hanson Road was built in 1965 and is a split-level home with an existing tuck under garage. Current home complies with today's zoning ordinance. And the existing home, as you can see in the picture, has a covered porch structure that is currently over the front door, which is not counted towards the front yard setback because it's less than 80 square feet and it's unenclosed. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments that were included in your packet. Drainage associated with the foyer addition will be directed to Hanson Road. The project, as I stated earlier, the project... The remainder of the project complies with all other zoning requirements. As you know, Minnesota statute and the Edina zoning ordinance requires that when granting a variance, there are certain conditions that must be satisfied. Staff believes that the proposed addition meets those three... Or meets those conditions. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district and complies with all of their zoning standards, with that exception of the front yard setback. Staff believes that the variance request is reasonable and that the applicant is proposing a variance for a small addition to improve the accessibility to the front entry of the existing home instead of proposing to tear down the existing structure and rebuilding. The practical difficulty is caused by the location of the existing home. The applicant could not construct an entry addition to provide a comfortable entrance and closet space without the need for the variance. The existing house is set near today's required front yard setback, and the requested variance is minimal and will help accessibility to the front entry of the existing home. Staff also believes that granting the variance to the front of the lot line... Or to the front lot line will not alter the character of the neighborhood due to the fact that the small addition is very similar to the aesthetic of the existing covered entry today. Tonight, staff's recommendation is for the planning commission to approve the 4.25-foot front yard setback request for the foyer addition to the existing home at 5812 Hanson Road based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. So as you might notice, the applicant is also... Or also shows a garage addition on the north side of the property. That garage addition complies with all of the zoning standards. So it's just the proposed foyer addition that's shown on the east side of the property. With that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Emily. Are there any questions for Emily?
Emily, this foyer addition, is it... I mean, it's enclosed? That's why it's...
It's enclosed, yes.
Why is the picture you have up, it's not enclosed?
Correct. An unenclosed portion of our existing structure, an unenclosed structure, can encroach into the front yard setback if it's under 80 square feet and is unenclosed. So that's where the existing covered entry fits under today.
Yeah, see that? Okay, thanks.
Do regulations account for the size of the lot or the width of the lot or anything like that? Or...
Not for front yard setback.
No.
For side yard setbacks, that would come into play. But for the front yard setback, the... Is required... It's based on the existing setbacks to the houses on either side of the subject property or the average of the block.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Emily. Is the applicant here?
Courtney Carti with Murphy Brothers. So I was the designer on the project.
Great. Any questions for the applicant? No, good. Because it's also a public hearing. Has anyone from the public would like to speak? Can't see if there's anyone else.
I'm gonna be bold and move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, back to the planning commission. Any other comments, questions? Motion?
I'll move approval of the variance subject to the findings and conditions in the staff memo.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I just want to thank the applicant for a very complete set of plans. And it's nice to see a workaround to an existing home that doesn't involve a teardown. So appreciate it. It's clear that you're only asking for what you need to make it workable. And it seems totally reasonable. So thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries or opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you. So next on the agenda is reports and recommendations. Anything to report? No. Okay. Correspondence and petitions? Nope. Chair and member comments? I think we've commented enough tonight. Anything else? No? Okay. Any staff comments? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.